Good evening. It's Tuesday, February 8, 2022, at 6:01 PM. My name is Joe Baker and am Mayor of Kennedy, Texas. It is my honor to welcome everyone here tonight and call this regular meeting of the Kennedy City Council to order. I will now call the roll and establish whether or not a quorum is present. District One, Councilmember Cindy Sines.
Here.
District Two, Councilmember John Rodriguez.
Here.
District Three, Councilmember Chris Parker.
Here.
District Four, Councilmember James Douglas.
Here.
District Five, Councilmember Sandra Schultz.
Here.
Five members of the City Council are present, and we have a quorum present to see. I would like to welcome Pastor Danielle Knapp with United Methodist Church, who will lead us in prayer. If everyone would please rise in prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. It's on.
Is it?
Yes.
There's no lights on. Is it on? That's why I always check them first, if the battery's dead.
The battery's on.
Yeah, chief.
All right.
Chief.
I'll use my pastor voice, all right?
Thank you.
Let's pray. Lord, we are grateful that we live in a country where we can gather together to do the business of living in community. And we pray, Lord, for the decisions that are made today, that you would grace them with wisdom and with patience and with understanding, that you would help us remember that we are called to love our neighbors and to do what is best for all people. So, Lord, we pray that your presence would be here and that we would listen to your voice guide us. Pray to Saul in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Knapp. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Next is number five on the agenda, citizen comment. Mr. Lynn, do we have anyone signed up for comments this evening?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this time? If not, we will then move along to Agenda Item Number Six, Proclamation, Bart's Restaurant. I believe Sharon Reinhardt is here representing Bart's Restaurant. Welcome, Sharon. Step up here to the podium.
What size are they?
Double A's.
I have triple A's, double A's.
Double A's.
I didn't see any of the color. If I can get them from PD, we'll be feeling that.
We'll do them later.
I have a proclamation that I'd like to read at this time. City of Kennedy, Bart's Restaurant. Whereas the business community in the city of Kennedy is crucial to the city's economic health, and whereas the revenue generated by the business community allows the city to provide services that positively affect the quality of life for its residents, and whereas the jobs created by the business community support the quality of life that Kennedy residents enjoy, and whereas the business community provides valuable support that fosters and encourages public-private partnerships through institutions such as the Kennedy Chamber of Commerce, the public schools in the community, and others, and whereas the city values existing business communities and commits to making every effort to retain the strong economic base, and whereas the city recognizes and appreciates the dedication, innovation, and entrepreneurial spirit displayed by Bart's Restaurant. This establishment has been in business since the 1930s and has had a few owners during that time. Current owners Candace May and Melanie Ferguson have been operating Bart's Restaurant since 1997 and have been an integral part of Kennedy at 445 North Sunset Strip for 25 years. Now, therefore, I, Joe Baker, Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, publicly commend Bart's Restaurant and hereby proclaim February 2022 as Bart's Restaurant Small Business of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, on behalf of Candace and Melanie, they're both having to work tonight, so I appreciate this. This is, I think this is a great honor, and I think it's something really nice that y'all do for all the small businesses to be recognized, and because last couple of years, we've gone through a whole lot, so thank you so much.
We're going to go in slightly different order than what's listed on the agenda. And first up is the Public Works Report. Mr. Lynn, I believe you're going to present that one?
Yes.
Evening, Mayor and Council. One second. Please. So, Mr. Peredez isn't here this evening. He is working a water leak, and it's of notice, and I need to tell you all this before I go any further. Area off of industrial, by Cadillac Jacks, in that area out there, we have a major water leak out there. Mr. Peredez believes that the water will be off two to three hours out in that area, and he has issued a boil water notice for that area due to dropping below TCU guidelines for being off for two to three hours. So, just want to make that announcement since I got that information tonight, so everyone can hear tonight, those that are listening in on Facebook Live, and that Ms. DeSharnis has posted that boil water notice. That's for sure. All right? Thank you. You all received Mr. Peredez's boil report. I'm just going to briefly go over his summary here. Had a couple of resignations and separations in the month of January, hired a couple of people in the month of January. He's still about four people down, and we're working on that. We've got the eight-inch water line project, which I'll speak a little bit more on in the City Manager Report. The board at Karn Street, the board at Karn Street is complete, and the Waco-Wive Oak sewer line project was awarded. I'm going to go in a little bit more detail in City Manager Report on that particular thing. They checked graffiti at the Convention Center Building. We do have a graffiti person running around on it. We're attacking it as we speak. Every time he comes up, we attack it, and after we do our evidence and that to build a case, so we are watching for that. He didn't have any training activities for the month, this month, and basically, that's it. In summary, that's it for him. So, thought we actually were going to do the whole report for you guys to ask questions. I probably answered a few things, if you guys have any non-specific questions to that.
Any questions?
Please, can I have one quick question? Is the meeting live on Facebook?
It was, but it didn't go good.
Okay.
Or is it memorized? He's too young to get that reference. Is it live or is it memorized? I remember that commercial. Okay, so I'm showing my gray hairs here. Chief Ash, thank you for this. Okay, Mr. Albiar, our co-compliance guy, is out ill. He's very ill, actually, and I just asked everyone just to not go home, keep Mr. Albiar in prayers. He has some health conditions, and on top of that, he's caught a bit with what's been going around, so we definitely are keeping Mr. Albiar in our prayers with all of this going on, so. So, I'm going to kind of go over his code report tonight for you. So, well, looks like he's just more or less listened to spreadsheet here. One of the things Mr. Albiar is working on for us here in the city of Kennedy, you all have the spreadsheets, and you can see the actual activities done throughout the month. If there's any specific questions on any of those, I'll go down the list and answer for you. But I do know Mr. Albiar has been working very, very hard on some things in Kennedy to help clean Kennedy up. As we discussed in prior meeting way back in the day, so to speak, we're moving away from just putting liens on properties in town. That philosophy hasn't worked over the past 30 years in Kennedy to clean it up, and we're moving towards a more aggressive strategy whereby we cull the liens and then we'll close on the properties, and that's how we're going to clean it up, and we talked about that. So, he's been working very hard on that. He's been working with Ms. Gadd, our city attorney, as well, getting the language correct, making sure we stay in compliance when we move down that path. He's also been out with, working with our new inspector people, Aoka. They do things virtually. If you haven't had an opportunity to have a virtual inspection from Aoka, it's a pretty cool thing. They, what they do is they send you an email with a link. You open up your cellphone, you push on the link, you take your cellphone, it's a panorama, and they walk around, they can see whatever they need, and if they need specific, you can zoom in, they'll tell you what to do, and you zoom in on it and that, and it's really neat. It's the way of the future in building inspections and that, so he's been working with Mr. Ganesh on that as well. So, we do have some constructions going up in time. Some of them have been delayed because permit fees haven't been paid, things of that nature, and he has been talking to some of the same potential incumbent businesses that I've been talking to about some things, which their names can't be released at this point in time, just chat. Any questions about anything else that y'all might have for me on this?
Any questions regarding building department code compliance? Please continue.
Okay. Then I'm done with department reports there, and I'll pick up the City Manager Report.
Streets and parks?
Streets and parks would be Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you.
Next up is streets and parks report under departmental reports. Evening, sir.
Evening, Mayor. For the month of January, the street crew hand patched and graded total six days 29.2 cubic yards of type D asphalt that's used. Also patched 72 potholes on the three-day stretch using 6.7 cubic yards of type D asphalt and 6.8 yards of base. Total for the month, as far as D asphalt was concerned, is 35.9 cubic yards and 6.8 yards of base. They swept four days during the month, mowed, and weed-trimmed 21 roadways during the month, finished up at the airport, worked out there for two days. Also, crew worked on brush and tree removal for three days, hauling off five trailer nos of brush to the collection station. We actually had two call-outs during the month, placed two temporary signs, worked on drainage two days, removing 36 cubic yards of silt within the two days, replaced eight trash carts, delivered four new trash carts, and removed eight carts as well. Picked up trash out of the receptacles in downtown for nine days. Two days were performed on PM during the month. Finished up January, went to beginning on the downtown Christmas lights, removing that, and also at the park for one day. We did have a training this month for some of the new employees that just got hired on, on some of the proper ways of the heating of the emotion in our tack pot, so that way we have multiple people that are able to go ahead and move forward. Whenever we've got to lay an asphalt patch down or whatnot, that way we know, they know how to place tack, go through the heating procedures as far as with the propane and everything else. So, them guys got trained up pretty good that day that we spent out there. And that's what I have on streets. And also there, you can see, we ended up hiring three employees during the month.
Any questions from the council?
We are, you seen the street sweeper?
They are out there right now as we speak. If you can hear it, that's that winding noise or that real kind of howling out there. They're out there. They've been working the last two weeks, weather permitting. I know they hit, it'll be on next month's report, but they hit Fifth Street, taking care of some of the curb and gutters, going in there, cleaning out some of the drainage. This week, they started from First Street, on Main Street, from First Street all the way out towards Sunset or 181. We're looking at cleaning up the islands right there at the intersection of 181 and 72, some of the silt and vegetation, cleaning up the sidewalk and ADA ramps right there in that area, so just to make some strides. Now that we've got that street sweeper, a couple of extra employees, it helps us out tremendously to be able to cover a lot more ground. Yes, ma'am.
How long before they'll get around to the Second Street-Tilden corner? There's also an ADA ramp there that is almost impassable because the mud is so deep.
And that would probably be either by the later part of this week, if not next week. Kind of what we're doing is strategically hitting some of the areas. I know we hit Fifth and Main, and then we're going to go up Second Street. Mr. Lynn and I have been discussing a couple of areas we're going up Second Street. We'll go down Escondido and then come down School Street and kind of hit some of the major thoroughfares through town to clean up some of that, especially for the drainage. We'll be out on 72. I know we have an issue right there at 72 and 792 by that little, I guess they were little apartments or man camp type deal, but that's one thing that we have to, I've got to contact Tech Dot to see exactly how shallow some of the conduit is that they put in for the lighting, safety lighting that went in there. We don't want to get in too deep and hit anything that they have, because it's going to, it's going to require quite a bit of digging in that area just to run it back towards Nichols Creek, because the fall is actually running back towards the intersection instead of towards Nichols Creek, so there's going to be a little bit more in there, but I'd like to see that water come off the road.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other question? No, please continue.
As far as parks concerned, the complex, they drug and swept the turf fields five days, cleaned up the receptacles five days as well, weed-trimmed around the fields for 10 days. The Kid Park and Pavilion, they weed-trimmed and mowed 12 days, picked up trash 18 days. Tried to do something a little different this year with the palm trees. The guys kind of took it upon themselves to look at a couple of videos and skinning some of them palm trees to get some of the older stuff off, and they really came out really nice. They did an awesome job over the four days that they spent doing that, those all by hand with the little axe and with the box cutter, and they did awesome. I think the palm trees looked great out there. They also cleaned up the pavilion on 14 days. The walking trail bridge park and basketball courts, they mowed 12 days, weed-trimmed 12 days, picked up trash around the area 18 days, also removed some of the branches from the windstorm that knocked over some of them for three days, swept and cleaned up the area as well. They also went in and took down all the birdhouses that were, that are out there at the park, and they revamped them. They kind of fixed them up quite a bit, and then they went ahead and painted them and everything else and put them back out there at the Bill Chapman Meadow. On the Nottingham lots and the soccer fields, they mowed and weeded four days, picked up trash four days as well. We also hired an employee out there, so we are fully staffed at the park, and we had one of our full-time employees go back to part-time. He decided he's going back to school, so went to park.
Any questions regarding parks?
Not parts, Joe. I'm sorry, back to streets. I had somebody ask me if it was possible to get a sign posted by the flower shop for the deer crossing. I heard, and I know my mother-in-law's killed a deer right there. Would that be something the city could do, or is that checked out?
We can do it. I can get with Tech Dot, get with Nick and Kevin over there and see if it would be easier for them to go ahead and take care of it. If not, something we can take care of, more than sure.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one quick question. Do we have a timeline on a plan to have a trail connect from our park to the Escondido-Greek Parkway?
Yes, Mr. Lynn and I have come up with a timeline. They were out there today, actually, moving more dirt. The problem with some of that is when we get rain, we're just limited on what we can do, because when it gets muddy out there, I don't want to run up either part of the, back there at the Nottingham lots for going into the park, so. But they were out there today, if I'm not mistaken, they ended up moving, I believe, 40, 48 cubic yards of dirt. We're probably about, I'd say halfway as far as connecting, as far as dirt's concerned, the earthwork, so then after that, it'll be just a matter of getting the forms, pouring the concrete for the ribbon, and then adding the vegetation control and the decomposed granite, and we're good to go. But we're going to add three 30-inch covert pipe to allow the water to flow once we get in there. That'll be a little bit more extensive work to create that little bridge where we go to the top to connect the two trails.
How wide will the concrete ribbon be, about two foot or?
The concrete ribbon will be a foot wide on each side.
A foot?
And it'll be eight foot in between, so that way, I guess, in the future.
It's going to be complete concrete.
Oh, it's going to be.
That is my fault for not communicating before this meeting.
Okay. It'll be 10 foot total, so.
Oh, the trail is going to be concrete now?
Yes, sir. The plan was originally to do the concrete ribbon and then do the decomposed granite right now, so that we could have an immediate effect of the trail, okay? And then we would monitor that and see how that works for everybody, and then we could always come back later and lay concrete between the ribbons, because the decomposed crushed granite can act like a base for the concrete. But I have been hearing from numerous people that they would just prefer us, if we would just make it totally concrete, and it was my fault for not communicating that to Mr. Hernandez before this meeting, that that was the direction we were going to go, was to just go ahead and make it complete concrete. So, the things he said was based upon that, so, Joe, I'm sorry for not letting you know that, but we are going to go complete concrete.
As a bicycle rider and sometimes skateboard rider, I thank you for that. It's going to be much easier to ride on concrete than the decomposed granite, so I'm glad to hear that. Any other questions for Mr. Hernandez? Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Next up is the police chief report. Chief Ash.
Mr. Ash, thank you. I'll take this one. So, I wanted to start off this evening and introduce you to our newest officer. This is Robbie. He is a two-year-old black lab. He is fully trained as a narcotics dog. He actually was a rescue in New York City or New York State. He was a rescue and tested for working dog. He's recently completed his training with Officer Mikado, and they're now on the streets working together as a narcotics team. We hope to have quite a few years with him, and we hope that he's going to do a lot of good work, but I wanted to bring him by and let everybody see him and introduce you to him, so you could see him. You see him on the street, he's out there doing work. Because he is one of our officers, I went ahead and got him his own badge that I wanted to give to Officer Mikado. He's going to find some way to hang that on him when he gets out there.
He'll be a necklace or something.
Yeah, so he's also.
So, do y'all see his nose pointing that way for a little bit? Earlier, we had some type of narcotic in that corner.
We were training here earlier.
That's why he keeps pulling on it. He gets another residual odor.
Even from earlier today.
How old is Robbie?
He's two years old.
Two years old. Beautiful dog. Thank you. So glad to have him here. He's going to be a great asset for this city.
Thank you, officer.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the rest of my report, animal control, I was going to start with that. We did have former officers out for a few weeks with medical, but he is back now. With the new law on the dogs being, not being chained outside, our animal patrol officers went around to different houses that they saw animals that would be violating that ordinance, made contact with them, let them know what the new law would be. As of now, all of those houses, all those people have complied with the new regulations, so they were very upfront, trying to fix it before it became a problem. I have noticed several people in town that I noticed the dogs they had outside, but they now have some sort of kennel or shelter for them, so we will continue to monitor that and watch for it, but so far, everyone has stepped up and is doing the right thing, so we appreciate that. We have not had to cite anybody for that yet. We did have 40 calls for service for animal control, picked up 10 dogs, 25 cats. That continues to be an issue with picking up cats. Dead animals, we had to pick up 10 of them. We did have five dogs that were reclaimed from the owners that came and picked them up. Another five went to the adoption, to be adopted out, so we started adopting some of them ourselves. The main organization is backed up like everybody else is, so we're kind of starting to adopt them out ourselves as best we can out as well, so try not, try not to keep them too long in our shelter. Also picked up one deer, no armadillo or foxes this month, so 21 citations, or 21 warnings, and then we issued 15 citations as well. That's about for animal control. For the PD, you saw Robbie, just to let you know, he is a, he was provided to us by a foundation grant. It's the Robbie Gale Charlotte, I believe it's pronounced, Foundation. The board member on that is the Assistant Chief at Stephen F. Austin PD, and that's how I met him and got connected with him. But they provide the dog and cost of training as well, so it's all provided to us from this foundation. His name, you notice, his name is Robbie. One of the stipulations is all the dogs that they pick have to be named Robbie. After Charlotte's husband, his name is Robbie, the foundation is in his name, so that's why his name is Robbie. They provided all that for us at no charge. That's, I don't know if you ever priced that, but a dog like that with his training is very expensive, so it's a joy to know that they were able to do that. We did have our first class of hotel owners for our crime-free hotel program that we're working on. I had two hotels that came for our first round of training with the owners. We're now in the process of doing the physical inspection of their buildings. If they, once they pass that, then they'll be part of our program. We'll put signs up on their building that they're part of our program, that they're crime-free, and that they meet all the standards. The two we're working on right now are the Kennelwood and Best Western. Both are chains. Both of these chains are part of this program in other cities, and so that's why they were going to start up, so we're excited about that. Hope to have both of those February, should be hopefully done this month on that. We did have one open position that has been filled out. Officer Trejo comes to us from Carr's County Sheriff's Office. He was with them for five years. He's also retired from the U.S. Coast Guard. In the Coast Guard, he worked interdiction. He did a lot of boarding of vessels and law enforcement type of operations in the Coast Guard. He's very technically minded, has a lot of tactical training that we're excited to have to add to our department. Lot of experience with that that I think will be a big help to us. He should be done with his training in the next couple of weeks. At that point, we'll be fully staffed again with our patrol and then the K-9 unit, so. And Mr. Mayor is in, unless you have questions.
I do have one question. Back to dog and control. Is there any ordinance on our books that our pets must have a city tag along with the veterinarian rabies tag, and how do you go about containing one of those? How much does it cost?
Yes, the city ordinance does require all animals, all pets in the city, to have their rabies tag and a city tag as well. You can get that just if you come up here to City Hall and just tell them you need the tag, one of the animal patrol officers will come and meet them, and I don't remember the fee. It's four or five, it's five bucks or something like that.
I want to say $6. Six dollars and one.
Yeah, it's not much.
Two, five, six, something.
Yeah.
Two, five, six. Two, five, nine, I don't know.
$6.50.
And I don't remember the fee, it's four or five, it's five bucks or something.
I wanna say six dollars. Six dollar one.
Yeah, it's not much.
Two, five, six, something.
Yeah.
Six dollars and fifty cents, I believe.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact number, it's not per dius, a few dollars.
We used to receive them when we had rabies clinics and Dr. Maketa or Hordy Richards was out giving the vaccinations. She received a city tag because the city was sponsoring that.
Yeah, we haven't done that, but.
It's been a long time.
We do wanna look, we've talked about doing some adoption events in the future if we keep having animals that we can.
Yeah, but we used to do it on a Saturday out at the park, and it was like, I don't know, it's been a while. Five dollars a dog, then it might have been up to seven or something, but it was always a really big turnout, and that's all it was, rabies, rabies clinic.
Yeah, we have to look at it.
Come and look at it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for the chief?
I have a quick question. I know you mentioned the new, the new law regarding, you know, chained dogs. Can you explain that a little bit so that, you know, anyone watching?
Yes.
Or, you know, that needs the explanation, make a little more care.
Yes, as of January, I believe it's the eighteenth, that new law went into effect. It's a state law, and there are some, I've had a couple of questions about it. It's a city ordinance, it's not a city ordinance, it's a state law. But it requires that no animal can be left on a chain, a metal chain, or weights that can't be chained up. They still can be on a run on a nylon or tether type of thing that they can move back and forth. They're also required to have certain shelter that gets them out of the weather, off the ground, they have to have food, water. Also, they're not allowed, you can't leave a dog in the elements for more than, I believe it's eight hours at a time before you bring them inside. So you can't just leave them, I know y'all have seen these dogs just chained up on a big chain in the yard, and it's all just dirt where they are. Yeah, you can't do that anymore. They have to have a run that they can move in. So now it's either that or you put them in like a kennel. I've seen some people put up kennels for their dogs, and that kind of works better as well. If you have any questions on that, just make sure to have a caller, the animal control guys, they'll be happy to come out, take a look, and help out with it.
Chief, I had a question like what I had asked about last month with, between you and Joe about the signs that, placing a sign at the end of Houston Street and.
Yeah, I went, I did, yeah, I did go look at it and spoke to Mr. Lynn about it. The problem you're running into is it would require, I think we figured that would require change in the city ordinance because there's no prohibition against them driving on that street. And it is, I see exactly what you're talking about, that is the simplest way to get from seventy-two down to Ashland, it's a straight shot. So the only real way to do that, you have to change the city ordinance to prohibit trucks on that roadway. I'm not sure if you all want to go down that, but that'd be a really hard way to fix that.
At the end of the meeting, I'd like to put that on for a future meeting.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you for your work, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Next up is the city secretary's report. Ms. Myles?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. We held the job fair in January. I think we had a really good turnout considering that it was a very wet day. We are processing the new hires, as some of the directors have reported, there have been new hires being processed this month. Statisticist is continuing to grow. We've hit almost a hundred participants at this time. We have added the target area notification system so that way we can reach out to the community in specific areas. For like example, the city manager had mentioned something about there being a water bowl notice. So we can target just that zone to send out notifications so it doesn't cause a panic in other regions of the community. I have reached out to Kennedy ISD and to the Chamber of Commerce to partner with them to utilize the program so that they can send out port notifications. Like last week when we had our emergency weather, KISD did use our notification system to notify community residents who were participating in the program. For utility billing, we had seven new residentials in one partial, and for disconnects, we had five disconnects for residential and one commercial. The fire department reported having fifteen calls and that they used thirty-one thousand, six hundred forty-five gallons of water and had about eight personnel respond to the calls. Municipal courts reported seeing a hundred and thirty-nine defendants and collected nineteen thousand with a net to the city of about fourteen thousand. And for event planning, I would like to have Mr. Sharnes come up and present the city of Kennedy's events that we have going on. And then after that, we would like to have Jolene Herreliger with the executive director of the community chamber come present on the Bluebonnet Days.
Mr. Lynn, is the microphone working now? Do we have any battery in it or?
We do, is it on, Ruben? Yes.
Okay, so it's gonna be really short and sweet. So we're gonna do Fourth of July fireworks. So I'm getting ready, getting everything planned for that, and then I've been getting quotes. I know that you all wanted the downtown light bulbs changed, so I've been getting.
Oh, sorry, can you speak into the microphone? I'm having a little hard time hearing, thank you.
Okay, so I've been getting quotes on display this year of the downtown area for Christmas, and then getting everything planned for Fourth of July. And then Jolene is here for the Bluebonnet Days, so.
Thank you. Welcome, Jolene.
Good evening. Can you guys actually hear me?
Yes, thank you.
So I'm here to answer a very question. We are hosting Bluebonnet Days this year. Our dates are going to be April twenty-second and twenty-third, it's a Friday and Saturday, and it will be hosted in Joe Billy Park. We had a meeting with Joe Baker, the city secretary, and Amy, and we discussed locations, went over everything, and we feel it's the safest, best location. It keeps us off of main street, anybody getting hit, anything like that. It also saves a lot of money in shutting the streets down, there's a lot that goes into that. We will still be doing the parade, so we will have to shut down the street for that. I've worked with Chief Ash, we'll continue on working, getting through text dot and all of that because that's a hassle. So in front of you, you have a map of what we currently have. There's a lot, this was just recently decided, so there's still a lot to work on, so bear with me, I'll have more details next month. But if you want to take a look at your map, so it'll show your entrance here. We're looking at putting parking in the soccer fields and our barbecue tournament and our cornucle tournament over to your left in the rest of, in the soccer field area. We are gonna keep away from those homes so we're not too close, there's not too much noise going on. We're also made aware that there's a water main in that area. We will stay off of that in case of an emergency. You can see the stage is gonna be in this area over here in front of the barbecue. We're gonna face the stage away from the home, so we don't have any noise issues, noise complaints, anything like that. The yellow line that you see is going to be a fence that'll separate all of that, so we don't have people walking behind. The fencing, we're still working on some of that. We need to barricade and make sure things are safe and people are kind of controlled, but still able to get out in case of an emergency. As you can see, we've got our food truck vendors. Truck vendors, we're kind of taking that as sort of what you guys experienced with Christmas in Kennedy. It went over really well. We think it'll give them stable ground to be on those basketball courts so they're not sinking, anything like that. Food trucks can kind of get in and out of that park without any issue. Does anybody have any questions? We have not secured any of our headlines. We're working on some stuff, but as far as headliners, it's not a hundred percent concrete. But we do have a T-HO one we're working on, and hopefully you can get them, and you guys will be excited. I've heard really good things about them so far, so just wants a contract signed, I can announce it. Any questions, suggestions, anything like that? All of this is open to change, it's just, it's a new location and it's gonna take a little bit of work, but.
If you refresh my memory, was there a Bluebonnet Days in 2020?
There was one in 2020. It was March of 2020, right before COVID really became.
But there wasn't one in 2021?
Correct.
Well, I'm glad we're getting back to Bluebonnet Days.
It's the forty-third, and a lot of it is thanks to the city for allowing us to have fat ones, and I mean, that's, that's always been a major issue, the funding. It's a very expensive event, people aren't aware of how much it does cost. We are asking volunteers, if you want to come out and spend an hour of your time doing anything. This event is not, it's not run by a whole bunch of people. It's myself and nine board members and a handful of volunteers we have. So I do, I am aware that the city is gonna help us a little bit with that. So, you know, you wanna come out and be James Douglas to come and help me, that would be awesome.
No, I will.
Yes, please do.
I would be happy to volunteer.
That would be wonderful. If you guys want to get with me beforehand, we can definitely come up with a plan and what we can utilize you for. Alcohol, I know, is later on the agenda. If you do have any questions during that ordinance discussion, please let me know, I can try to answer them to the best of my abilities. Alcohol actually will not be handled by the Kennedy Chamber or the city, obviously. Five D has a traveling cavern they're gonna use. It keeps liability off of us, off of anybody. Those people are trained to handle that. It's just, trying to do the alcohol is, it's a lot, so they're gonna handle that, and they can make money, it's a local business, so.
Any questions from the council? I just want to thank you for all your hard work and planning on this. It's a wonderful event for anybody who's never attended, it's great, and I'm excited that it's coming back, and I look forward to see the entertainment, it's gonna be live.
Well, we thank you guys for your support, and, you know, we want to come together and try to make this thing happen for the people, so.
Thank you, Jolene.
Thank you.
That concludes the departmental reports. Moving on to agenda item number nine, city manager report. Current projects, future projects, current operations and/or future operations, and presentation of financials. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, Council, residents of Kennedy. Lots been going on. Past couple of years in Kennedy, we've seen the onset of the sports park complex going from nothing to completion. We endured a worldwide pandemic, and weathered that. We endured a statewide snowstorm last year, and we've come through that. We've seen the city of Kennedy progressively moving forward at each step of the way through all of this. One of the things I identified in December of 2019, when I first came down to Kennedy to interview for this position, was I identified a lack of small businesses that were strategically placed in the town. I also identified the lack of certain name, national brands in the town that we, that I thought as a town in Kennedy should have. One of the things I set out to do was there's a progressive trend of food trucks, and this trend has taken off like a wildfire. Actually, Texas is one of the few states where a sole proprietor can get a trailer, deck it out, and sell food from the trailer. Virtually everywhere they can park that trailer. Most other states have much more stringent health requirements than the state of Texas does. And that's not to say we're not stringent as a state, but having been in food and state, I can tell you, coming from certain counties in the east, that Texas doesn't compare to those. One of the things I wanted to see in my time here in Kennedy, because I was down here twice interviewing, I saw no food trucks in Kennedy. So I thought, you know, how great it would be to have a food truck park somewhere in Kennedy. It's a great way to bring in people who aren't from Kennedy. It's a great way to bring in small business opportunities here in town. If you have a permanent food truck park, then it's a, it's a great way for a particular organization that maybe is only open one or two days a week to put a food truck in, maybe capture some other business in another location without having to build a brick and mortar store. So what we set out to do is we set out to do a pilot program. And I identified this pilot program, I ran it through some people that I trust very much with advice, and we talked about this a great length. And what we came up with, that I began to move forward with, was to identify two or three businesses, small businesses, and that was a key thing. They had to be small businesses, it couldn't be McDonald's, a burger from your Chick-fil-A, or anybody like that that has national brand recognition. I wanted it to be complete, small business America, mom and pop, sole proprietor type organization, or at least an LLC. And we went about that to try to figure this out. So put together this pilot program whereby we go out and we find these people, and we talk to them, see if they'd be interested. And we did find one, thanks to Mayor Baker bringing them up months ago. Porter's Coffee turned us on to Porter's Coffee. I went and partook of their products and that, just to see how their operation ran. Talked to the young ladies off and on, just to see what was going on. We invited them to City Hall, to park out from the City Hall, at the time whenever they were doing their mobile thing, when they were going around Facebook saying, "We're gonna be here this week, here this week, here this week." So I took that opportunity to kind of follow them from a distance, if you will, and kind of see how things went. After listening to some people and that, I thought, you know, that'd be a great opportunity for them, to bring them right here to City Hall and stabilize them. So I asked if they would be interested in doing that. Of course, they jumped right on it, and henceforth, as you see, they've been out front for about a month and a half now, sitting out there. People come from all over Kennedy and Karnes City now, they know where they can find them to do that. At the end of the day, where this goes is, you get into all sorts of things when you're talking public, public entity, how you take care of it. So one of the things I thought about doing was installing a thirty amp electrical outlet outside, and then having them plug in the thirty amp electrical outlet. After I looked at the cost of that versus the benefit, it wasn't worth it for the city to put that out there. So I just went ahead and authorized the young ladies to go ahead and plug into our electrical outlet outside. They're not pulling that many, many kilowatts that we noticed it, so I didn't see any downside on that part. What we did there was I came up with the idea through talking to these people that I respect highly. And we came up with what we call a nominal, nominal fee for this. It can't be too much to discourage people from wanting to do it, but it's gotta be enough to cover whatever expenses they may incur to the city. And based upon the size of their trailer, based upon what they were using, the electricity load they potentially would be pulling, I came up with a number of fifty dollars, ran it by these guys, and asked them if that was feasible, and they all told me it was completely more than feasible. So we come up with a number of fifty dollars, and that's the number we settled on to do that with.
Is that monthly?
That would be monthly going for, yes, sir. So what we've done is, we started this pilot program. It's open to anyone, honestly, who wants to come talk to me about it and has, has a business that they have a food truck. Now, we're not looking for buildings. I've heard that people have portable buildings that they tow around, it's not what we're looking at, it's gotta be a true food truck. So it's gotta be a trailer that's a food truck, that they've been selling food out of, or some type of beverages out of for some period of time. So they're gonna have to have all the proper licensing. But it certainly is open to anybody who wants to apply for it. The key to this whole program is that it is a complete pilot program. So at any time, can walk out there and say, "Guys, thanks for your time, have a nice day, go find someplace else to put your trailer." The idea here is, what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to observe the residents of Kennedy and Karnes City and Karnes County and Rungy and Three Rivers, and people passing through Kennedy to see what kind of business food trucks would garner in the city of Kennedy. The idea is to have a permanent food truck park in Kennedy, and I'm looking at three locations for this particular food truck park. One of the locations I'm looking at, of course, would be the obvious Craig Street and Live Oak property that we have, Gil Wynn's property would always be a location to look at. I'm also looking at a location right there at the Joe Billy Park, where we have our sports complex closer to Bel Air. Just a little bit off Bel Air and the soccer field, we could do something nice there. I'm also looking at this particular building, council people have mentioned to me about the Rialto Theater. I'm kind of hooked on the Rialto Theater. If Rialto could ever free up and they ever put that up for sale, we could actually acquire that. That would be an excellent place to put a food truck park, because then we would be able to have these people downtown. We'd be able to enhance the downtown aesthetics of the city, and we would drive people to our downtown, which is all what we really wanted to. So this is kind of where we're going with this whole program and everything. It is completely pilot test, it's, you know, they're here more so for my convenience, so I can monitor what's going on and gather the data. So when I come to you guys as the council, and I say, "This is what we want to do," when you guys ask me, I can say it was a huge success. All these people, have all these people, you go out there any given time, see four, five, six cars out here. Also, Ms. Myles and I had a discussion, and she came up with a spinoff of this. And she was looking at the grassy knoll up here on. Grassy Knoll up here on that side of the City Hall. And what we were, what she was thinking was, hey, we don't have a market days. Wouldn't that be a great place for market days? So Ms. Miles and I have talked about this and I agree with her one hundred percent. Having a market days, testing it out right here at City Hall where everybody knows the location, that there's, there's no, you know, how do I get there? When was I get to City Hall? Uh, testing it out up there could be an awesome idea. And then bringing in maybe a food truck or two during the market days for them to be up there as well. So this is the kind of direction that we're looking to go for the communities, to bring in some of these things that are completely community centric, uh, to get the community involved in things that's currently not going on in the city. Um, additionally, uh, last month I spoke to an individual by the name of Mr. Obletto. Mr. Obletto, uh, runs the San Antonio Food Bank. Uh, Mr. Obletto through Councilman Douglas, uh, and Councilman Douglas actually facilitated the phone conversation between Mr. Obletto and myself. Uh, he reached out to us last month when we had that major water leak. I kind of wrote one sixty-six and he knew we were doing a bowl of water notice to see if we needed any bottled water for our residents. Uh, we didn't at the time. But what came out of that conversation is something really awesome, I, I believe. Uh, Councilman Douglas, he, uh, came up with the wonderful idea that, uh, currently the food bank does a, uh, drive out of the show barn, I believe it is, once a month? Am I correct in saying the show barn?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we just, they had one yesterday.
Okay. So once a month, the, the residents of Karn County can come out here to the show barn and get whatever necessities they can get from there from the food bank to help, help ease their pain financially so that they have food. Well, Councilman Douglas came up with the idea that, hey, could we maybe do this on a quarterly basis just in Kennedy, add another food drive? And Mr. Obletto was very much receptive to that idea of coming back to Kennedy and having, uh, another. So essentially, in a half, in six months' time, you would end up with eight food drives or, or food distributions, if you will, within this area. Six being out of the show barn, two being with here within the city of Kennedy. Um, they figured, we all got together and thought about it and thought it'd be a great thing for those residents, uh, in our communities that are down their luck and having a hard time with things, that this extra boost would help them with food as, as we see the rising prices at the grocery stores and things of that nature. That's not due to our economy. It was due to the world economy at this point in time. So, um, so there, there was that. We had that taken care of. Then I spoke with an individual by the name of Mr. Brimhall. And Mr. Brimhall's with Abundant Solar. Uh, as you all are aware, one of the things that we want to do, or the direction I'd like to go in the city of Kennedy, is again, I want to get on that emerging market of EV charging stations. Mr. Brimhall builds these EV charging stations and, uh, has the, the method, uh, the means to put in the, uh, credit card meters as well. So he and I talked about the, the, the vision for what we'd like to see, how many charging stations we'd like to have, types of charging stations and those type of things. I've already met with, um, Ms. Strauss regarding this exact same concept. And Ms. Strauss has indicated to me that should we move in that direction, AEP would be willing to help us, uh, with construction costs because they can't do anything for us on electric usage. They can help out with construction costs through a grant or something of that nature, uh, as long as they have funds available for that. So, uh, we would be looking at that as well. So as soon as, uh, Mr. Brimhall gets back with me with the drawings, we're going to go over, take a look at it, see where we need to go, what the next steps will be before I bring it to you guys to take a look at for us to actually get real serious about living forward. So those are kind of some of the things that we've been, uh, working on in the city over the course of the last month. So, um, so as far as projects go, um, we had the East Main walkthrough, uh, with the council. Um, we went down there, took a look. Uh, there were many cracks that were noticed. Um, and, uh, it was decided that Mr. Hernandez would, uh, communicate to the contractor that the cracks, uh, that were one-offs needed to be properly fixed. But then there were several actual, uh, sections of the road that had way too many cracks and that those would have to be yanked at and redone. So that's where we are on the East Main project on that. Um, the TDA CDG sewer line grant, uh, that's the, uh, grant for Live Oak and Waco. The contracts have been signed. Uh, there was a minor typo, but we're going to get that resolved. Um, they're doing the pre-construction meeting tomorrow, uh, at one thirty here at City Hall and, um, Mr. Swain has, uh, indicated he'll take care of the typo at that point in time when everybody's here with their, with their hard copy. So we're moving along with that. The Carizo Water Line, uh, now, uh, we're putting that under the GLO Hazardous Mitigation Grant. Uh, where we are with that, all the startup documents have been filed. Uh, we're moving forward with that, that grant. The environmental survey is the next phase. That will be done on that. So Langford Management will go out and they'll do the environmental survey. When they're done with that, they'll submit that to us for review. Once we approve the environmental survey, we'll submit that to the GLO. Uh, once the GLO accepts it, then the GLO will move forward with issuing the AUGF, which is the Authorization Use Grant Funds. And then from there, that's where all the fun really begins. Uh, that's when we get to start breaking the grind at some point and doing all those wonderful things that we're looking forward to, to bringing the water to Kennedy. So, uh, we got to do the environmental survey first and then we can move forward with everything from there. Um, the convention center, as you noticed on the agenda, we're going to actually address that a little later, but, um, Mr. Berger has completed, uh, the renderings that he was given to complete. And, uh, those were in your packets that you all can begin looking at all of that and beginning your ideas from whenever we do meet, what you'd like to see, what you'd like to keep, what you'd like to see, go, those kind of things. So it's kind of exciting. That's moving forward as well. And then the eight-inch water line extension, uh, as I mentioned, uh, in the, uh, public works report, um, the walkthrough was completed today with the engineer. He did notice a couple of things that needed to be taken care of and he informed here or lease that they need to take care of before he will fully sign off on that being a completed project. So we're actually really on the back end of that. We're about, we'll just say ninety-seven percent come with that. So, any questions about anything in the report?
Any questions from the council? Mr. Lynn, when can we expect to break ground on the new water transmission line? I know it's a fluid situation and that, that, that date keeps shifting, but where are we at right now at this moment?
Well, if, if we, if we follow the GLO timeframe, um, the end game is going to be somewhere in twenty twenty-five. Um, so we would probably be looking at maybe, depending upon how fast we get some things taken care of, as, as early as maybe winter twenty twenty-two, maybe February, March twenty twenty-three. We should be able to maybe break ground. Based upon their timelines.
Winter twenty-two or spring twenty-two?
Right, like December, like December, January, February, you know, that area.
And then we anticipate about two years' construction time?
They're, right, according to the grant, uh, according to the GLO. Um, so, and right now, that's what we're, we're going with, um, for right now.
Well, let's hope it's this winter.
Let's hope things all work out, weather permitting.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynn on the, the first part of his report? Uh, Mr. Lynn, you continue with the presentation of financials. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so we'll start on the left-hand side. I like to always use the deal with liquidity. Uh, the tax pool account's drawing front has about two-point-nine million in it. Uh, hotel motel tax has about one million in it. Uh, water sewer fund, eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Um, paving fund has about two-point-four million in it for a total, and tax pool of seven-point-three million. Uh, at the time we presented the financials, we had two-point-two million in the bank and we have about nine-point-five million total liquidity, which translates to about seven-point-oh-seven months of, uh, expenditures. So, again, again, going back for anyone who might be new listening in tonight, um, the, uh, auditors said we should have about three months' worth of expenditures. We have seven, so we're in pretty good financial shape there. Um, we are at month four of the budget year, which is about one-third of the way through the budget, eighteen. Um, so our number that we're pegging to is thirty-three-point-three-three percent. The current revenue is for the general fund, eight-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, uh, which brings our budgeted amount, uh, for the year-to-date to two-point-nine-seven million. Uh, that's thirty-seven-point-three-four percent of our budget. We're pegging against thirty-three percent. Since that's a revenue, uh, having a higher number than the budget peg is a positive thing, so we're outperforming the budget there. Uh, we spent five-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand uh, in the general fund, which brings our year-to-date total to two-point-one-four-one million. Uh, we spent twenty-seven-point-oh-three percent of our budget. Since that's an expenditure, we're pegging to three-point-three-three, thirty-three-point-three-three percent. So that's a good thing. We spent less than what we budgeted, so we're outperforming our budget there on the general fund. Water and sewer fund, uh, five-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-nine-eighty-two was our revenues. Uh, brings our total to two-point-five-three-of-a-million dollars for the year. It's thirty-point-three-four percent of the budget. Uh, so we, we are kind of underperforming on that one a little bit. Um, that's a typo there out to the side about the outperforming. Um, on the expenditures, uh, we spent five-hundred-and-four-thousand-one-twenty-nine, brings us two-point-oh-seven-eight million dollars for the year. That's twenty-four-point-nine-two percent, uh, against the thirty-three-point-three-three percent. So we're outperforming on the expenditures. And, uh, overall, we have a twenty-five-point-nine-four percent total budget to thirty-three-point-three-three percent total budget. Uh, so we're definitely outperforming our budget, so we're actually going pretty good.
Any questions on the, uh, financials? Any questions?
Thank you for your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is the Gen Item Number Ten, Consent Agenda. This section shall provide for items that require action by the council, but where little or no discussion is anticipated. By a single motion, second, and affirmation majority vote, items under this section are approved without further discussion or action. Item A, consideration and approval of regular city council meeting minutes of January eighth, twenty twenty-two. Item B, consideration and approval on financials. Item C, consideration and approval on amendment number one for the engineering services contract to establish an amount of five-million-three-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for infrastructure per federal regulations pertaining to the GLO Community Development Block Grant. Mitigation, CDBG-dash-MIT Program Contract Number Twenty-two-dash-zero-eight-five-zero-zero-six-D-two-three-four. Item D, consideration and approval for amendment to administration and environmental services contract to include an amount of two-million-four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and thirty-five cents for infrastructure per federal regulations pertaining to the GLO Community Development Block Grant. Mitigation, CDBG-dash-MIT Program Contract Number Twenty-two-dash-zero-eight-five-dash-zero-zero-six-dash-D-two-three-four. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Go ahead and make a motion. We accept the consent agenda with all due attention.
A motion, a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez. Is there a second? Is there a second to Councilmember Rodriguez's motion? Well, if there's not a second, then there will be no action on the consent agenda at this time.
Mayor, for the record, let's go ahead and pull them one by one because we do need the financials and minutes at least approved by the council.
Okay, is there a motion to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Go ahead and make that motion.
A motion from Councilmember Rodriguez. Is there a second? A second from Councilmember Sines. Uh, Ms. Bowles, if you'll call the roll.
Which item was pulled?
A and B. To accept consideration and approval of regular council meeting minutes of January the eighth, twenty twenty-two, and B, consideration and approval on financials.
Ms. Bowles, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carries all voting in favor. We'll now pull items A and B from the consent agenda for consideration for questions or discussion or a possible motion.
I'll make a motion to approve A and B from the consent agenda.
With a motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
All second.
Second from Councilmember Parker. Ms. Bowles, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Bagels?
Yes.
All voting in favor. Motion carries. Consent agenda, consent agenda items A and B are approved. And there's no action on items C and D at this time. Or should we pull Mr. Lynn? Would you, you want to try again or?
It's, it is the consent agenda, so.
I have a question. Why is it on consent agenda and not just a regular item?
I'll defer to the attorney for that.
Because of the overall project already being discussed and approved, we needed the minutes for the project. Um, so it's not really another discussion about the items. That's the only reason it's on the consent agenda.
So in other words, what, what Attorney Gad is saying is that when we did the PSA, they already put the percentage in there. When we signed the contract with GLO, the percentage was already in there. Whether or not you guys approve this, they're going to get the dollar amounts for the percentage per the contract. What this was for was just to be transparent as to what the dollar amounts were, as, to what those percentages translated into in dollar amounts of the total amount of grants. So that's why they would just put in the consent agenda because there's nothing really to discuss about them. The, they're going to get those numbers whether you guys approve it or not on us.
So basically, we just needed to approve them?
Basically, just as a formality, just saying, "We acknowledge that eight percent of forty-three million dollars is going to go to them at, you know, five-point-three million." So that's.
I noticed Ms. Langford is here this evening. Ms. Langford, um, do you mind stepping forward and giving a quick explanation? I don't know. You explain to me why this is necessary. But maybe just to clarify for the sake of the council.
Good evening, council. Yes, so the reason why is because when GLO comes to monitor, and they will probably come to monitor this project several times during the life because it's a very important project and it's one of the higher amounts that was funded of the eighty-one projects, uh, through, for this program. So, excuse me, when they come to monitor, they always look to see that there's minutes to cover any contractual obligations. And as the contract has already been approved at a percentage, they, they, GLO wants to make sure that it's amended to be inclusive of the actual number as well, so that there is a hard number in the contract and to give the contract itself a, uh, the number that GLO has given it once it's funded. So that would be what you were approving tonight as an amendment to the already standing contract to identify the, the hard number instead of just a percentage.
Any question?
I, I have a question also.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, my question just is, moving forward, how do we, uh, prevent confusion about that? How would that be worded so that we can, um, approve it without questions? It was a little confusing. I think that's why there was no movement.
Has everyone reviewed the information in their packets regarding that?
And I personally did not. That's why I was not going to make a motion for anything. I've not had time to do that, I bet.
So this is what we're here for tonight. So any questions?
I didn't feel like I should do anything with a non-informed.
What is your question more focused on? Because tonight, if the council votes for this, you've taken care of the grant administrator and the engineer. There's nothing else to approve for them. Anything going forward as far as construction goes will be just as you all have always done. We'll come to you guys with a contract with a not-to-exceed amount specifically stated and a line item agenda for you guys to vote on with either, uh, two set engineering representative here or a Langford person here in addition to the potential contractor to ask questions to. So going forward, all of that stuff will be in a line item, just like it always has been. It's just because this was already in a line item under a percent that all you all were doing was just quantifying that percent into a numerical value. There didn't really need to be any more discussion on it because you already approved these by percent.
As the actual numbers.
Right. You're just quantifying that percent into a, a number for everybody. Right. You're just quantifying that percent into a number for everybody to see what the number is.
Which is required from GLO, correct?
That is true. And to kind of further explain that a little bit more, there's a federal law called two CFR two hundred that now says that basically you have to do pre-procurement of engineering and administration before the project is even identified. So the RFP and the RFQ, the request for proposals and the request for qualifications, has to occur prior to the application being written, prior to the project being identified. So that's why it's in a percentage in the procurement process as and into these contracts, because the project hasn't been fully identified until the application is, until after engineering and administration procurement has occurred. Also, basically, GLO has capped the fees on engineering and on administration, and these numbers identify what those caps are. Yes.
Yes, any other questions before we consider pulling these two items and then taking them under consideration again? Are there any other questions for Ms. Langford while she's here in regards to this specifically? If not, then thank you, Ms. Langford.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to pull items C and D from the consent agenda at this time?
Go ahead and make that motion to pull items C and D.
We have a motion, yes, we have a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez to pull items C and D from consent agenda.
A second.
We have a second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Malsick, you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Unfortunately, I have to abstain, not because I'm not in favor of this project, but because of my marital relationship between myself and one of the employees of Langford Community Management Services.
Okay, we have four votes in favor with one abstention. Motion carries. We will pull agenda items C and D from the consent agenda. And now at this time, is there any further discussion on items C and D or questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion on C and D.
Go ahead and make the motion to accept C and D items on consent agenda.
Motion from Councilmember Rodriguez to accept C and D. A second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Malsick, you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Again, I abstain.
Four voted in favor with one abstention. Motion carries. Moving on to agenda under ordinance resolution, other action items. This section shall provide for all other official discussion and action items provided for consideration by the council. Number eleven, consideration of possible action to reappoint Suzanne Nunez and Alicia Sandoval to the City of Kennedy Parks and Recreation Board for a two-year term beginning March first, 2022 to February twenty-eighth, 2024. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, City Council, Ms. Nunez and Ms. Sandoval's terms expire this year on the Parks and Recreation Board, and before you, you should have a letter from each of them expressing their desire to be reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Board. As of this meeting tonight, these are the only two individuals that have informed us that they wish to be reappointed via a letter. There may be more coming from next month, but as of tonight, these are the only two.
Any questions, any questions or discussion on agenda item number eleven? For either of the two persons here tonight, Ms. Nunez, both are here. Would you like to say anything at this time?
I really haven't enjoyed being on the Parks Board. We have some more projects where we are in to get down at Park to Park, and we want to see our parks grow and they're all beautiful. So I really appreciate, we would appreciate for us to, whether it's Kennedy or our work.
We appreciate your service and thank you for your letter. Ms. Sandoval, you have an interesting statement?
Yes, again, I would like to continue to be on the Parks Board, because I enjoy working along with Nunez and the other members on the board. And we just like to continue to make things happen, and especially in the, in the park, because it needs a lot of attention.
Thank you also for your service to the City of Kennedy. We appreciate it. If there's no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion on number eleven.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item eleven and reappoint Suzanne Nunez and Alicia Sandoval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Schultz. Ms. Malsick, you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All vote. Number twelve, consideration of possible action in regard to authorizing Kennedy Economic Development Corporation Chair, Mr. Kerry Richards, to sign a contract between the Kennedy Economic Development Corporation and Drewa, am I pronouncing that correctly? Yes, sir. Drewa Designs for the purpose of creating and maintain a standalone website for the Kennedy Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Lynn, Mr. Richards, you have a presentation.
Counsel, Mayor, Drewa Designs is the individual who set up our brand-new website that everyone seems to love so much. And I talked to Mr. Richards and the EDC Board. It's beneficial if they have their own website for that. They elected through a process of going through some hurdles and that. To go with Mr. Drewa, at this point, we have a service agreement that Mr. Drewa has come up with. I did review the service agreement, asked for Mr. Drewa to make a few changes to it. He made those changes. And now we have a final agreement that needs to be signed. And as the city manager, I'll say the reason why Mr. Richards, the president of the 4B, shouldn't be able to sign these documents. That's why we brought it here to you guys, to authorize him to bind the 4B to Mr. Drewa. Mr. Richards, do you have anything you'd like to say?
The purpose of this separate website is twofold. One is to prevent or present community activities and stuff, such as move on a date and all. But the more important thing is, we're starting to try to work, the EDC is trying to work to pull businesses to Kennedy. And if you look at some of the other websites that they've done, for like Floors Bill was a very good one. They can list properties for sale, they can list land for sale, they can list personnel to contact for certain things, permits and all. And so what we're trying to do is actually get a website to begin with to start pulling businesses or at least know that we're here. The second thing is, is that as we move forward, and Mr. Lynn, have I been talking about possible opportunities that are available, primarily pulling from San Antonio to supplement businesses up there. They can look at this, know where we are, know what we have available, know who to contact, and hopefully, we can then generate, bring businesses to us.
Sounds like one-stop shopping for potential business developers to, source of information that would help them with the process of locating here. Sounds like a great idea.
I just have two quick questions. One for financial transparency. The cost of this, is that coming from 4B or from?
Yes, 4B.
And then the second question is, we'll be able to link this right to our website to be able to promote their website as well?
Yes. That was one of the things that we talked about, so that agenda items and stuff, once they get posted to the city, automatically will be posted on our website.
Any questions for Mr. Richards? Thank you, Kerry. Any further discussion on agenda item number twelve or any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item twelve.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second from Councilmember Parker. Ms. Malsick, you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voting in favor, motion carries. Moving on to agenda item number thirteen, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance twenty-two dash zero-two, an ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas, amending the solid waste collection and disposal rates be scheduled, providing for collection of delinquent payment, providing a repealing clause, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Mr. Lynn, you have a presentation?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilman Mayor, our contract is with Waste Connections for the collection of our solid waste within the City of Kennedy and its disposal. Per the contract, they are allowed technically each year to raise their rates in accordance with the CPI and some of the other various factors that they have. And that is, it's contractual. So that's where we're at. They didn't raise their rates in twenty twenty-one. We didn't have to go through this, but this year, they are raising their rates. And if you'll take a look at the very back page that I have, we're attaching a, for you all. I have a complete breakdown of what the rates currently are in the City of Kennedy and what the rates are going to. And that represents a six point oh six percent increase. They pegged their number to the CPI as of October. I can tell you that the CPI that ended in December was a little higher than that. So if they pegged it to the annual CPI, we'd be looking at even a steeper increase there. So like I said, this is contractual, so you can see that the grayish blues, the new rates proposed by Waste Connections, and then the orange area is the new rate that will be passed on to the residents of Kennedy. And our rates, our rates go into the residents are just six point oh six percent higher. We're just moving them up the same number that Waste Connections is.
What happens if we don't do this increase?
Then we're gonna, then we're gonna be spending, and we're gonna be spending funds, because they're gonna bill us at the higher rate anyway, because it's contractual. And we're gonna have a civil issue on our hands, because we're still going to have to pay those bills and invoices. And those funds won't be approved by the city accounts we pay. So I'll be spending unapproved funds by the city.
So let's see, what we're looking at is for a residential customer, an increase of about a dollar and twenty-one cents over what they're currently paying.
Yes, sir.
And then it increases as we move down the chart into commercial and commercial container service and roll-off containers, et cetera.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the council or discussion?
Mr. Lynn, you haven't had anybody come, other companies come and talk to you about possibly servicing Kennedy?
I haven't had any companies come talk to me yet, but it is on my radar to go out and identify other companies, because I believe we're in year two of our contract, and it's a four-year contract. So we have a little bit of time to go out and look for people. But yes, I will be going out and looking at other organizations. So then we get to the end of this cycle, we can serve them their proper notice of certified mail, so that we can revisit it. The only thing about that, just I want to caution the council on this, is sometimes when you do that, what that does is that also provides a negotiating platform for Waste Connections to jack up their rates far in excess of where they are today. So it's a gamble on our, on our behalf, but I'll do all my due diligence to make sure the risk is minimal for the residents of Kennedy.
I don't know how I feel about rate increases. It just, is, the Waste Connections increase has to be paid regardless, right? So whether we pass it on to the customer, we're gonna have to absorb that cost. Do we have to increase our fee on our side?
The answer to that would be no. We don't have to incrementally increase the fee on our side. However, by not doing so, then that truncates our budget and the revenues that we have coming in. And we're gonna make, we're gonna have less dollars to spend on road, infrastructure, water, sewer projects, things of that nature.
I agree with James. I don't like increases either, but that's kind of.
Nobody likes increases.
We've seen that everywhere.
In a four-year contract, and that's the problem.
One, one thing I will say regarding this is that they do peg to the CPI. And as anybody who's been following the economy, the world economy has been atrocious. And people that have not hedged their expenditures through investments are really feeling the pain right now, which is most of America, to be quite frank, okay? But what we have is, is in October this year, when the CPI comes out, if the CPI is only two percent, then that's what it's pegged, it's two percent. So then if they were to raise them, it would be only two percent. Granted, it's two percent on six percent the year before, but that's where they peg it to. And every year, they have come to the City of Kennedy, except last year, for a raise.
I'm sure fuel costs are a big part of their business, and we've seen an increase there, so that's understandable.
Do we happen to know a number of, say, we didn't increase the rates to the residents and we just ate that cost? Do we know an estimated total that we'd be eating?
You'd be eating, well, what we'd be looking at, Councilman Parker, is you would be paying Waste Connections eighteen dollars and seven cents.
Right.
And you would only be receiving twenty dollars and four cents for that. So that's only like, what, a buck ninety-seven? So that's all the City of Kennedy would be receiving, would be a dollar ninety-seven versus the two dollars essentially that we were receiving. So we would be losing roughly about three, four cents a transaction, over seventeen hundred transactions, which over time does add up.
There's expenses on our end as well, administrative costs. And whenever there's an issue, city staff are tasked with sorting that out, so.
That is correct.
We have, it's sort of a partnership. They provide the bulk of the work, but we have a small percentage as well. So that's why that's built into the fees to help cover those office costs and all the other costs of doing visits.
And I can, I can tell you, I can, I can tell you all this, that currently I have, I am copied on every email that is sent regarding a mistrust pickup from the utility billing firms. And I do monitor that. And when I do meet management from Waste Connections, I let them know my thoughts at certain times.
Any other questions on number thirteen or discussion?
One thing I just want to say, I know it was mentioned a few minutes ago, but I, for one, definitely want to consider other options down the road. Just, you know, mainly because, I mean, at the end of the day, if Waste Connections wants the business from Kennedy, they'll bid on the project, you know? And I'm sure they will. But I'd like, you know, years down the road, when it gets to that point, to at least consider other options. Because I know, it's a funny name, but it's a legit name. White Trash Services out of the Victoria area. You know, I've seen their billboards, you know, for, you know, not residential, but, you know, for the business side. So it looks like they're making a push to this area. So, you know, who knows, they might want to bid on it. And Tiger out of San Antonio, you know, but of course, that's down the road.
I can definitely, I can definitely take down those names. In addition to Republic, north a little bit. What we can do is, when we get to that point in time, it's going to be critical. The way this is gonna play out is, we have to serve them a certified letter saying we don't seek to renew their contract, okay? Once we do that, then we open the box of being able to go out for RFPs on this. And then we can go out to RFPs and see who all applies. And we can actually, in the RFP, stipulate what we want as a municipality for our residents as far as services go, and then they will all press it out apples to apples at that point. I agree with the council on this. It's been something I've been looking at since I've gotten here, except rather than looking at another company, I've been looking to see if we could save money and bring it in house, which would provide even lower potential costs to our residents by doing that. I don't know how feasible that's gonna be, but. I don't know how feasible that's gonna be, but definitely I'm gonna keep in consideration this White, White Trash Company and this.
Tigers out of San Antonio, they service the Elmandorf area. They've been servicing the Elmandorf area for several years since at least twenty thirteen, fourteen, I believe. And then White Trash Services, they, I say Victoria, they serve a lot of the rural communities outside of Victoria. I don't know if they're based out of Victoria, but it's kind of, it was like a startup company. They grew very quickly.
Yeah, I definitely will kick them in the mind. I'll reach out to them as we get closer. I'll probably even reach out to them sooner just to kind of get a feel for them and make a contact and start, start the roads that way. Just listening to the discussion tonight, I think I'm pretty good just to where the council wishes to go. So I know how to take action from here on out without anything. So once again, while I don't necessarily agree with, you know, what's going on and that, I certainly don't really approve of, of the rates based upon the service we perceive. I've seen much better service for low prices. Unfortunately, we are in the contract with them. Unfortunately, the situation we're in right now, this is what's before the council tonight.
I will say this, during my first six months as mayor, there were numerous complaints. And during the past six months, there have been far fewer complaints. So I think there may have been a learning curve on their end and as they learn the routes and the roads. And of course, everybody's struggling with, to find manpower to fill the jobs. And so sometimes bird the hands work through the bush.
Sometimes, Mayor, but what I can do to elaborate on your statement just a little bit more. Since I've been in the City of Kennedy, I have now seen four managers of this route. One manager is unproven. He's the most recent one. Two managers just did not get it for the City of Kennedy. And one manager, Mr. Davis, he made a point to come to the city council meeting to meet all of you all. He did every single thing we asked him to do. He went out on land for us. He is the reason why those missed trash deliveries went down. He is no longer with Waste Connections. So the new individual is taking over. I do not know how that's gonna work out with this individual. But right now, their track history, from what I've seen, is sixty-seven percent have flopped.
It's a little unstable.
Yes. So that.
Any further questions or discussion on agenda item number thirteen?
No, but I do, I mean, I understand when I was looking, because, you know, we have to do that. Nobody likes an increase, but we also run the risk of the other being higher than this. You know? I mean, that's with everything, though.
Cost benefit.
Yeah. It's true.
Any further questions or discussion on thirteen? If not, then is there a motion? Do we have a motion on agenda item number thirteen?
Do we have to do this today? Is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, because the, the rates were effective February one. They were originally effective January one, but I got them to push them off to February so I can get it in front of you guys.
Is there a motion on agenda item number thirteen? Last call. Okay. There is no action on agenda item number thirteen, as there was no motion on agenda item number thirteen. Moving on to agenda item number fourteen. Consideration of possible action in regard to issuing a one-time temporary variance on chapter sixty-six, Parks and Recreation, Article Three, Parks, Section sixty-six dash sixty-four, prohibited acts within the parks, subsection, subsection seventeen, to possess or consume alcohol in the parks to permit the sale and consumption of alcohol during the Bluebonnet Festival on Friday, April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, from six P.M. until eleven fifty-nine P.M. and on Saturday, April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, from twelve P.M. until eleven fifty-nine P.M. Mr. Lynn, you have a presentation?
Mayor, before I do, can we go back to agenda line item thirteen for a second, please?
Yes.
I would be wondering if the council would be willing to move forward with that with the stipulation, we approve their rates, hold static the city rates to the residents. The reason why I'm asking for that is, as your city manager, I do not want to be spending city funds that are unapproved. And since I am contractually obligated, as the city manager, to adhere to the contract between the city and Waste Connections, I'm gonna have to pay these increased rates, no matter what you all do. So.
So the decision is whether or not we
Right.
run the residential rates or absorb the cost?
Rather, rather than just not taking action on this line item, maybe the council might consider approving the rate on the wholesale end so that I can pay the bills with that, with approved funds by the city, but not increase the rates to the resident. Now, we take a hit financially, but I would rather see that than no action because at the end of the day, I still have to pay the bills.
Would there be a motion along those lines for a council member regarding agenda item number thirteen?
I'd say no, because he has to pay the bills.
There's a motion.
And people are not gonna want, not having their trash picked up.
That's the last thing they want to see.
Yep.
Yes, we have a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez?
I will second that.
It was seconded from Councilmember Sines?
And would you let us know what that amount is that we?
I will, I will calculate that amount on a monthly and annual basis. And I will bring that, I will email that to you guys. You get it quicker. How's that?
It should be if you just total this one column here, the second column from the left, right?
Well, what we would have to do is we would have to go through, figure out how many residential customers we have, how many
Oh, okay.
commercial customers we have, and then calculate it like that, so we have a fair reaction.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on agenda item number thirteen. Ms. Mousen, if you'll call the roll?
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
No.
Motion carries. Four voted in favor, one against.
Thank you, council.
Next is agenda item number fourteen, which I've already read. Does anybody need me to reread the agenda item? Okay. Then continuing on, agenda item number fourteen. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so we have an ordinance, sixty-six dash sixty-four, item number seventeen, and that ordinance says it is unlawful for any person to commit any of the following actions in the City of Kennedy, Texas, to possess or consume alcohol in the parks. So no alcohol, you may not have your hands, it may not be near you, can't be sitting in your cooler next to your chair, nothing. However, with our impending Bluebonnet days, that would kind of be a violation if five D's shows up to sell alcohol in the parks. And there's a rule says you can't do it. Since this is a one-off for the year, basically, it's just for the days specifically to Bluebonnet, just like any variance the city council would provide for a replat or a setback or anything like that. A simple, a simple vote of the council would just acknowledge him to issue the one-time variance for the Bluebonnet days this year to vacate that rule just for that time. So that's why we're here with this, is so that you all can say yes, rightfully. We're gonna vacate that, so Bluebonnet days can do what they normally do.
And I believe, for the council's information, previous councils have done similar things for similar events, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn, you have a lot of firsthand experience there.
Yes, as far as the park, I'm not sure, but I know like on nature, yes, we would give them permission to do that.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lynn?
I've got a question. On this variance, I just want to kind of confirm that this variance is not just, I mean, kind of includes everything, the selling, the possession, the consuming. Because I guess what I'm getting at is, we have barbecue cook-off. They're not gonna be buying your, they're not gonna be bringing your. I just want to make sure that's included, that's okay, you know?
Yes, sir. Yes. The, the, the ordinance is very specific with the word possessed. Possessed is all encompassing. Doesn't matter how you get it, you're not allowed to possess it. So by issuing a variance to line item seventeen for the period of Bluebonnet days, you're essentially saying, if you go to HEB and get a twelve-pack, put it in your ice chest and bring it over, and sit down and pop one every once in a while while you're roasting those short ribs or whatever, you're gonna be fine. We're not gonna, not gonna cite you or arrest you or anything like that.
So it's very important that the public understand it is just for this specific time period?
Right, just for the specific time period. So when you make your motion, if you are going to issue the variance, you need to be specific in your motion as to the dates and times that you are issuing the variance for, very specific so that, for enforcement purposes, please.
Okay, so, so one of the things that happens, that's happened over here when we have it over here, when the guys are cooking overnight, they're drinking overnight. I don't wanna have a bunch of problems, you know? You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Because I start cooking at night on Friday, and, you know, it ends up in the morning. So as long as we're clear on that, you know? Because I don't wanna get a bunch of calls, like, hey, the cops are over here. You know, I was just drinking my beer, and I thought I was okay. You know, I'm cooking. See what I mean?
I, I, I see what you mean.
We've got timeframes here.
Right, and those timeframes are actually pretty strategic to have them. Because technically, they're gonna be cooking near a residential area.
Well, that's what, that's
And
Over here, they were not too close. They were here and they were
They were, they were most of the time, if I understand, they were down on the Craig Street properties.
Well, they were down here at the railroad. We had a little time here.
Been on with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but over there, they are right near Nottingham and Children. And so I think for the, I believe, anybody who comes in here and cooks barbecue, if they can abstain from drinking alcohol for just a few hours for the safety of children, I think they have a problem. And I'm just gonna say it just like that. I don't mind bringing this to you guys to say for the Bluebonnet days, let them drink during the, you know, timeframes and that. But overnight hours, when we get into two, three o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, nothing good ever happens at two, three, four o'clock in the morning when you're drinking.
Well, that's what I'm, you know, I, I don't have no problem with anybody drinking, you know, while they're cooking. But if it becomes a problem, you know, that's where we get into that, you know what I'm saying?
Right, so that's why it's specific that when you make your motion, you make your motion date and time specific.
So I think the way that we can kind of, and I totally understand what you're saying, as I've seen it firsthand. I think the way that we can handle this, of course, we have our own cash, but I could probably post something. My plan is to kind of have this barbecue in their own little area. Like, this is your area, and it's gonna have, not necessarily fencing, but some kind of barricading, so it's a designated spot. So maybe what I could do is, like, post signs, letting them know, no consumption after midnight. And if that's something that does occur, then can the police department cite that? If maybe, okay.
And I think a lot of the people will comply when they see our officers just going by every once in a while, you know?
There should be a pretty significant security presence to the event.
From my experience, those guys can be pretty respectful. I mean, if they go inside their camper, it's not like we can go inside there and check it out. But I think that they would be, I think they'll be respectful.
And I think that most of the complaints we'll get from over there, if we get any, is gonna be loud noise.
Yes.
You know, if some guy has his, his stereo on real loud, and, you know, somebody's trying to sleep on that. Even though we're gonna have the fence there, but, you know, music travels.
Yeah, we'll talk to them and try to, I'll put all of that on their paperwork.
Information is the best thing, that we make them aware of what, you know, what could go wrong. You know, that please try to follow the rules, you know? Because we want everybody to have a good time.
What, what time is the cook-off anticipated to be? Because that was on Saturday, right, the twenty-third?
It's actually Friday and Saturday. I think turn-in time for one of the items is I think one of the items, if I'm not mistaken, is seven o'clock on Friday night. It's either seven or eight o'clock, but that's one item, and then they'll shut down. It's part of the sanction, the TABC, the organization.
What time do you think they would arrive? Oh, let me rephrase. What time do you think they would start cooking on Friday, the twenty-second?
I mean, I can put in our paperwork, like, you can't arrive before a certain time. I mean.
Well, the reason I ask is, like, the agenda item states
So
Friday, April twenty-second, from six P.M. until eleven fifty-nine. But if the turn-in time's at seven, and they start cooking at three P.M., we could easily say Friday at three P.M., you know, like their arrival time.
These times are based off of when our entertainment kind of arrives and starts. I mean, we're definitely possible at the time. If you're willing to go a little bit earlier, it would work. I mean, I can't tell that, you know, I can put up paperwork. You can't show up until six o'clock, and then you can't bring that one. So I personally think, Chris, are you?
I mean, personally, I don't think the timeframes are that.
I definitely show up pretty early.
Yeah.
They have, yeah, they will show up.
Some guys want to enjoy shots, and those show up early.
Like, the difference between three P.M. and six P.M. to me is nothing.
I guess the question is, are you willing?
I wouldn't want to say six A.M. on Friday.
Are you willing, are they able to go earlier on this, or does it have to be more different?
That's
How does this work?
Well, that's the thing, okay? So I use the timeframes that were available to me to create the line item. If the council wants to make it twelve noon on Friday to eleven fifty-nine, that's why they've gotta be specific in their motion. The motion is gonna be the controlling action here tonight. So they could even say eight o'clock Friday morning if they want. I don't know if they want that, but, you know? But the, the point is, if you think that the guys are gonna start rolling in, or ladies, who are gonna be doing the barbecue, and if they're gonna start rolling in, say, one or two o'clock, the council can go noon. You know, whatever the council deems is the number, but it's, they've just gotta be specific on identifying the timeframes and the dates so that the police department knows, and so that the party-goers know as well.
Sure. I would say twelve, one, something like that.
Yeah, because, I mean, I
That way they're not talking about the eight o'clock at Friday morning?
With as much room that we have out there at the park. I'm hopeful that we'll have a lot of people show up, you know, not just for the event, but for the cook-off. So, you know, I want to make sure that it attracts people and the ones to come, you know, not as hindering, it's like, oh, I can't start drinking until six, I'll, I'll skip it. You know, because that might happen, you know? And I, I need to see that on a technicality.
On the same thing, Saturday won't be in for late in the day if you're having to turn something in the morning.
Right.
I mean, because these guys drink for breakfast. You know, and they're, they're very respectful. We've never had problems with them.
Yeah, if it makes you guys feel any better, in the seven years I've been here, we have had maybe one or two incidents where we've had anything that's like a legality issue, having people arrested. So, I mean, they do keep to themselves. They're kind of quiet. If you ask them to be quiet, and we'll have court members that go around and make sure that they understand what they need to be doing. They kind of know all these people, so, I mean, that's, hopefully there's people.
Councilman Parker, what, what would you think would be a good time on Saturday? Nine A.M.?
The earliest time that I have, the earliest turn-in I have, I think, is
I think I don't know. I, I wouldn't start drinking at nine A.M., but
I think the earliest turn-in I have is ten A.M. And then the latest is three, if I'm not mistaken. We've changed titles, but I think the earliest is five o'clock, off the top of my head.
So we're talking Scooby Snacks? Huh?
Is there a TABC requirement for when alcohol can be sold, so?
So, no. It has to stop, it has to cease being sold at midnight, every Sunday night. That's why it's listed on here. I don't believe that there's a start time as far as being sold. We will not sell before noon, I can tell you that. There's no need, the five, you don't make any money. But as far as consumption, I mean, you can, like, we can drink beer all day, all day, guys.
I think because it's
If you were to get barbecue people to buy two twelve-packs by before, you can't stop them from drinking in the morning because they're not purchasing it in the morning. Is a way. That would make it worse.
Yeah, because this would factor into sale and consumption, right? Unless we separate them.
Right, so if they bought their alcohol the night before at HEB, and that's, that's, you know, they purchased it within legal, legal selling hours. Once you have it on your person, then it's a whole different dynamic at that point. That's just like, you know, somebody going out behind and taking it home. They can drink until three o'clock in the morning, if they want, on their front porch. TABC's not gonna come by and, you know, get them. It's just that because it's a public park, we have to constrain some things as well and provide some guidelines for people. I mean, you know, Scooby Snacks and Shiner at nine A.M., I don't know.
What if
Champions, don't you know?
What if, what if the window were changed from what, how it reads in the agenda item to noon Friday through midnight Saturday? For the sake of simplicity?
I think that would be It was, it was, yes.
Yeah, if you do that, five D's will have to legally stop selling at midnight.
Which they, by, I think, thirteen
So we won't have, we won't have the selling aspect. So we won't have, we won't have the selling aspect going on, so you could just make one timeframe like that if you wanted. Again, these are the timeframes I had to work with, so it's up to you guys.
And I don't have to have this answered tonight, so if we need to go back and we need to get with Mr. Lynn and we work this time or the way it's worded, I can do that, it doesn't matter anyway.
Do, do we have to have it worded differently, or can we just make a motion?
The Agenda Line Item?
Yeah, I mean, the way it's worded right now, can we make a motion different from the way it's worded?
We just have to change it.
Yeah, you just have to change...
Speak out loud the good times that you want.
Right, it's just that your motion has to state date and time, and that's what the motion has to be.
Any further questions or discussion on number fourteen? Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we issue a one-time temporary variance on Chapter sixty-six, Parks and Recreation, Article Three, Parks, Section sixty-six through sixty-four, prohibiting acts within the parks to possess or consume alcohol in parks to permit the sale and consumption of alcohol during Bluebonnet Festival on Friday, April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, from twelve P.M. until eleven fifty-nine P.M. on Saturday, April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second. We have a motion from Councilmember Parker, and a second from Councilmember Douglas. Ms. Mousif, you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jolene. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, consideration and possible action in regard to awarding a contract to Weisenger, did I pronounce that right?
Weisenger.
Weisenger Incorporated, an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand one hundred and eleven dollars for the replacement and repair of Waterwell Number Fourteen's pump, and authorizing the city manager to sign all documents relating to the project. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you. So from time to time, our water well pumps decide that they've had enough, they're tired, they just don't wanna work anymore, and they're just gonna stop. And unfortunately, that's what's happening with Waterwell Fourteen, we've got a problem with it, it's not pumping anymore, and we need to repair it. When we started seeing the numbers from some of the people, we knew we had to do that for bid, we did, we had three people, which got their bids filed right in there. Weisenger came in as the lone man on the totem pole bidding-wise, plus side to not knowing the fact that they're the lone man on the totem pole. Weisenger's worked on a lot of projects with the city of Kennedy, they've worked on our wells, they've worked on our pumps, and they just drilled two of our wells for us up in the Cariza. So they have a lot of experience and a lot of history in the city of Kennedy, so I bring this to you guys, recommending that you award the contract to Weisenger in the amount not to exceed as listed in the item.
Any questions from Ms. Jolene? Any discussion? There are no further questions or discussion, is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to award the contract to Weisenger Corporation, an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand one hundred and eleven dollars in no sense for replacement and repair of Waterwell Number Fourteen's pump, and authorizing the city manager to sign all documents relating to the project.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez, and a second from Councilmember Douglas. Ms. Mousif, you'll call the roll.
Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is executive session. Number sixteen, closed session, city council will meet in closed session pursuant to the provisions of Chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in A, Section five fifty-one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney. Mr. Lynn, is there any presentation?
There will be an executive session, yes, sir.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Make a motion that we go into executive session?
I'll second.
A motion from Councilmember Sines, and a second from Councilmember Douglas to turn into executive session. Ms. Mousif, you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes.
All voted in favor. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to adjourn into closed session at this time, you are welcome to stay here until we come back into open session, or you're welcome to move.
May I recall the time?
Yes, the time is seven fifty-six P.M. It is nine thirty-five P.M., and we are reconvening into open session. Next on the agenda is item number seventeen, open session, city council will reconvene in open session at which time action on the matters discussed in closed session may be considered. A, Section five fifty-one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney, presenter City Manager Lynn. B, Section five fifty-one point zero seven four, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, City Manager, presenter City Manager Lynn. Is there any discussion on Agenda Item Number Seventeen? If there's no discussion, is there a motion? If there's no motion, then we will take no action on Agenda Item Number Seventeen, and continue on to Agenda Item Number Eighteen. Consideration and possible action regarding scheduling a workshop relating to the Kennedy Convention Center, presenter City Manager Lynn. Mr. Lynn?
I'm here. Okay, as I mentioned earlier, tonight, as City Manager for it, the architect has completed the two renditions of the proposed convention center, which I kind of put a little bit in your packets there, so now what we need to do is figure out when we can do a workshop, so that we can all get together and bring the architect up and have the, you know, the residents come in, wanna come in and take a look at everything, go from there. And I will tell you that I spoke with Mr. Berger, and right now, I was trying to get in between February the fifteenth and February the eighteenth. He's only available date that week is February the seventeenth. The week after that, I'm completely unavailable. So, hopefully, I'll be available the seventeenth.
What are the time?
We could, we could go, what, maybe seven o'clock, so, 'cause I know some people have some possible prior commitments. I would hope that the meeting wouldn't last more than an hour and a half at the most, since it's just two renditions to look at, talk about. And we would probably just hold it here in the chambers, in here, just, you know, to make it easy for everybody.
Seventeenth works for me. Any further discussion or a motion related to Agenda Item Number Eighteen?
I'll make a motion that we schedule a workshop relating to the Kennedy Convention Center on the seventeenth at seven P.M.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Parker, and a second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Mousif, you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, items to consider for placement on future agendas, governing body, city manager, city attorney. Do we have any items for consideration for placement on future agendas?
I wanna have, like I said earlier, I wanna get this situation with Houston Street and highways, truck route seventy-two, to amend this ordinance so we can put up some signage down there to keep, keep the eighteen-wheelers out of that neighborhood.
Councilman Rodriguez, when we do this, would you write, would you like for me to go ahead and write the ordinance in that way?
Yes.
So that the council is actually looking at the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarity.
And this will be for our regular march meeting?
Yes. Let me put on that. I also want to go ahead, so we can put a special meeting together to discuss business dealings with Langford and Associates at a future date, preferably next week or week ago.
We can just set a date?
Well, we'll set it at the march meeting. Correct, Mr. Lynn?
I thought we were having a special meeting.
Special meeting, this will be...
Right, you're gonna do a special meeting for that, but, okay, so, seventeenth we're booked, okay, so, I'm gone the whole next week after that, so, we can't get into, not if you want me here, I can't be here, that week I'll be at a conference.
Can we do it next week?
Could do it next week, I'd have to look and see, I know I've got some things going on that week, so, 'cause I plan everything out, so I'm way out, I gave y'all a whole year's worth of stuff, so...
Wednesday the sixteenth?
I'm okay with any...
Sixteenth is a Wednesday night.
It's church.
Yeah, you're gonna do a church night. Seventeenth we're booked, the eighteenth be a Friday.
I don't know if I'll be here that Friday.
So...
Fifteenth, Tuesday the fifteenth?
Tuesday the fifteenth, no, we can't do that, Parks and Rec, they're booked that night, so...
Do you go to the meeting?
No, it's not that I go to the meeting all the time, but we're gonna have the two meetings, so they may be, you know, well, we could probably, well, we would have to...
We get first, then they go to the other room.
Right, the issue is going into the room, and normally what we do is, we meet out here, and then we leave, and the residents can stay, and we go to an executive session or whatever, so...
Can't be in the dottery room?
The dottery room, we could probably do that.
I could just get Suzanne to write the minutes, so, if you do it on that night.
Yeah, we could probably use the dottery room, or we can move, or we can move them to the dottery room, that way we can still go back into where we go back into when we adjourn.
Is there a date? Is it the fifteenth?
Yeah.
At what time?
Tuesday.
Tuesday the fifteenth at six P.M.?
Six P.M.
Works for me.
For the march meeting, add the food bank, I don't know how to word it necessarily, but mainly, mainly for discussion.
Okay.
And hopefully, I cannot say his last name, so I'm just gonna say Mario can be here.
Yeah, that'd be good, okay, so I'll put that on there for, as an Agenda Line item.
First is the workshop.
Okay, so Tuesday, February fifteenth at six P.M., we will have a special meeting regarding our business dealings with Langford and Associates, and the two Agenda Items that were mentioned by Councilmember Rodriguez and Councilmember Douglas. Mr. Lynn, you will include those on the march agenda?
They will be on the march agenda, yes, sir.
Okay. Any other items for consideration or placement on future agendas? If not, we'll move on to number twenty, announcements of community interest and/or upcoming events, governing body, city manager, city secretary. Any announcements? Just my usual, Mayor in the Park, second Saturday, that's this coming Saturday, nine A.M. to eleven A.M., coffee and conversation, all are welcome. Any other announcements?
The Carron City I C D Education Foundation gala's the nineteenth, and the, I can't remember, the Crawfish Block, or KCHL, my mind is blank.
Both worthwhile organizations deserving of funding, so...
I believe it is...
When is that?
March twenty-sixth.
Oh, that's always off, okay. Time to get ready. Any other announcements?
The Carron's second Friday breakfast is being hosted on March eleventh at the Kennedy Nutrition, here, there on the street.
Well, that's good, the last one was canceled, correct? This'll be the first one in a long time. Any other announcements? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Twenty-one, and this meeting is adjourned, it is nine forty-four P.M. Thank you, everyone.